Welcome to the special selectmen's meeting October 11th, 2018. Let's do the flag salute.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Seconded to approve the agenda, all in favor, all opposed. Okay, minutes of the last meeting, we're gonna skip over, department heads are gonna skip over, and old business is gonna be tabled. New business.
I make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to MRSA 405, Title 1, Section 6A.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to go to executive session pursuant to the MRSA. Any further discussion? Overvote, all in favor, all opposed. This time we're gonna go into executive session, we will be back in just a little bit, folks.
I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded out of executive session, all in favor, opposed, okay. Okay. The next item on the agenda is road commissioner resignation. We'd like to take this a little bit out of order, because we trust that most of you are here tonight because of that, about the resignation of a road commissioner. At this point, I think we will allow some public comment before we discuss the road commissioner resignation. We would like to put the same stipulations on this that we have at all our other meetings, and that would be a three-minute timed, once everyone has spoken that wants to speak. If you wish to come back up again, we'll allow that for another three minutes. We will say, though, that this is not, we will not, we don't want to have any personal attacks on anybody, we just want facts and information. So, if any time that it does get out of hand and whatnot, we will shut that part of it down. So, I know we all can act like adults, and we can move forward with this in a good manner. So, this time, who's timing, Jennifer?
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. This time I'll more put it to public comment, if there's anyone that wishes to come up and speak.
Dave Winchell. I came up here the other night, I resigned on TV. I know, three minutes ain't gonna work for me, but I'll do what I can, I guess. But, yesterday, I was asked if I would meet with the selectmen, and I said that I would, kinda, I didn't want him, but I said that I would if we wanted to talk this out, this and that. Two of them decided they did not want to. And I'm not up here to tell you that I need this job, I'm not begging for my job, I'm up here to, I don't know, I wanna do this in three, but I had, I have big concerns and reasons why I did it the other night. And I believe that I did this because of stuff that's been going on for the last, well, probably a year now. And it's, it started from, we've got too many people trying to run one department, too many fingers wanna get into the pot, and this was never this way, never this way. We've always done the job, we never had deadlines, we just did our job, if we didn't do our job, we got voted out. And now we've got to the point now where we've got the road committee with their agenda, we've got selectmen with their agenda, and they're colliding. There's no way that you can have this many chiefs, okay? And the other day, we, I was given a deadline to do a job, this is back when I was on vacation, okay? And I was not happy about it, and I made it very clear I wasn't happy about it, because unfortunately, I opened the door up to that deadline. Because when a deadline came out last this summer, I got stuck in a rock and a hard place, and had to go do a project for another road commissioner, and I should never have done it. Because I knew when you open that door, you can't close it. And it gives, now it's, I've just given the authority to the selectmen to do that to me. When I got back, I decided not to do what I was gonna do. I called tree guys, guard rail guys, we got the tree down, we got on that project, the other project, which realistically, to finish those projects in the timeframe you got was unrealistic, but I was under the influence that I was gonna be able to get these projects going, and that was gonna suffice. If you look at all the payrolls-
Can I interrupt you one second?
Yep.
He said it's three minutes-
Yes.
-where he is the road commissioner, can we allow him to continue?
Not, I mean-
If everybody else has to do three-
If anybody else needs to speak first-
Am I gonna be up to-
I guess you're gonna be-
You can come back up.
Come back up, I guess.
I really appreciate that. I've been road commissioner, I was road commissioner six years in this town-
State your name, please, we know who you are, but just state your name, please.
Dave Winchell Senior, yep. That's actually my son, the road commissioner, right, whatever. Six years I was in this town, my father was for years, 15 years straight before that. I don't know how you guys, all of a sudden, you want some type of power, or whatever you wanna do, but we used to have one selectman that would sit with us over the two road commissioners and discuss our budget, what we wanna do, what we plan on doing, and we went with that. We've been working on roads for years. The road committee, you got one guy on there that might know a little something, but he got this little harem he's feeding, and then that little harem is being fed to somebody else, and it's just puffing it right up. Now, all of a sudden, it's just plain bull. It's unbelievable, the control you guys have taken away from that road commissioner. All the responsibility, all the knowledge, and what he's doing, just taking it away. You think you want to resign just for doing it? I don't think so. I hope you know where I'm coming. I have no idea why you people wanna own the, and be the boss of a road commissioner that knows what's going on. All of a sudden, you guys know more than they do.
Anyone else?
Fred Grumet. I kinda feel the same way. I feel that he's got a job to do, he knows his job, these people on the road committee, they may go to some classes and things, but they're gonna be able to do his job? Are they gonna wanna get up in the middle of the night during the winter and go out and plow those roads? No one, I mean, he's doing this knowing that his life during the winter, he hasn't got his personal life. And I really feel that he's getting poked on by a lot of people, and I don't like it. Like I said, we've traveled from Portsmouth on second shift back home, David Winchell's roads are the best around. From here to Portsmouth, no matter which way we went, whether on the Turnpike or 202, his roads were always the best, and I hate to see him go.
Anyone else?
You started this by saying you didn't wanna bring in personalities or anything. My name is Nancy Ruma, and I'm surprised that you're allowing the public to comment on town employees.
Anyone else?
Did she repeat? Nobody heard what she said.
Oh, I- I'm sorry. I am surprised that the selectmen are allowing public comment on town personnel or employees.
I think the difference in this case-
They could trade them for that one.
Excuse me, please. I think the difference here is he's an elected official. I think that's the difference, so. Anyone else?
Hello, Lewis Nishu. I've lived here, I've lived here all my life, and I've dealt with all the road commissioners in the past, hopefully I can deal with a few more in the present. I wasn't here Tuesday, so I really don't know what happened. Unfortunately, if that did happen, that David wanted to resign, it's too bad. And I agree, micromanaging is not a place to be. If you have questions, that things have to be accomplished, work together. As a group, we should be working together, especially with volunteers or people like that are elected positions. We shouldn't be arguing and complaining. Both him and Scott do a good job. Both him and Scott came before Walton Finney's and did what they had to do for people. They went to the town, they understood. If they didn't want David, they would've found somebody else. If they didn't want Scott, they would've found somebody else. We need to work together, we need to find out why he's gotten to this point, and nip it in the butt. We can't continue to do this as a township, because this is where it starts, where is it going to end? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi there, thanks for listening. William Gannon, I live in 13th Street. Dave's done our work and the town work for a long time, and everybody at this whole room must know he's great at it. We all feel about it. I think, you know, sometimes he may take on more work than he could possibly handle as a businessman, and it makes it difficult, and that make me, one of the reasons why these deadlines are such a hard thing. I recognize that as a previous businessman, I can only get so much done, I only had so many employees, and if my bosses gave me more and more, that became difficult. And when we, I remember a time, we had a snowstorm and a blizzard, and all the power was out in Lewiston, we had it in our restaurant, and there were about 7,000 people there, and a guy was in the back yelling, "Your service is so damn slow," and I'm thinking, I needed another hundred employees. And I think at times David needed that, I don't know if he handled this very well, to say the least, but I pray that it can be worked out, he's a good man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Suzanne Doyle. I've known the family, the Winchells, for a long time. They're very good people, they do a good job. I feel bad that it's come to this point, that people cannot be good, I'm gonna say Christians, and look at people for what they are. I feel that maybe it's partly my fault, because he came and did something for me.
Not at all.
And you know, I asked four years ago for help, and that person didn't show up. And David offered to do this for me for nothing. But because it wasn't his side, I came to the town and spoke to you folks. I just feel people should be given the proper respect that is due them, and people should look in their own cupboards to see what's going on, and understand that we're a small town, we all live together, we need to help each other and be civil, and not be disrespectful to anybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Not seeing anyone else, I'll ask, oh, we got one more.
Hi, my name's Ken Smith. I've known Dave for quite a while, always proud of his work and does great, good work, he's just can't say no to anybody, so I'm sure that gets him behind if it does, but I feel as though the only one that's gonna really suffer is the taxpayer, and it's not real good for Dave either, so, that's all I have to say, thanks.
One more time, anyone else?
Ian Spalding. Really don't come to these very often, but I know, I've heard about you guys setting deadlines for Dave, I work for a large paving company, and we get deadlines too, but you know what, weather and construction don't go together, you know? It rains, you don't pave, you don't work outside, those deadlines don't get met. That means you get backlog to next year, that means you have more work for next year, you always have backlog going forward, you know? I voted for Dave, I voted for Scott, you know? It's the townspeople's decisions who runs the town for public works, you know? You guys really need to think, you know, it could snow next week, you know, if he resigns, who's gonna be plowing this into town, you know? It's not just, it's safety for the town, you know? If these roads aren't sanded, are we getting nice to them in two weeks? And you guys don't have anybody, there could be deaths, because, you know, the roads aren't gonna be safe, and I'll tell you what, Dave does one hell of a job, you know? That flakes flying, his trucks are running, ready to go. So, thank you.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken? Hey, Dave, you'd like to come back up again?
We still have three minutes, or how was this rule?
Yeah, another three minutes.
Okay. So, I guess we'll, I'm gonna, yep. So, about a month, two months ago, I asked for an executive session meeting, you remember that? Remember the executive session meeting that we had? Okay, and what I did was, I was concerned about the role of the road commissioner, and what my authorities were and what they weren't. And I asked the selectmen to put forward some sort of policy to let me know what my job is and what my description is. That never happened, and, but, I didn't come up here to apologize to anybody, other than the people of the town of Acton, that I, by making the decision that I made the other night, because of board members, I wasn't thinking about the people of the town of Acton right before winter. Now, I asked, I would've showed up last night at this meeting, I have an awful hard time, swallow my pride, and I'm not, I'm not gonna do that. What I, well, I don't know how I, whatever, but I had been offered to be able to rescind my resignation. I have criterias to do that, and I, and for me to do that, I need to know from the select board that I can do my job without worrying about having other people do my job. Now, I've put Acton in a very tough spot. Financially, this is not gonna bother me one bit, but unfortunately, I'm letting a lot of my friends down, people that have supported me, okay? I haven't taken a vacation in the wintertime with my wife ever. I was thinking about doing that this year, but I have put Acton in a very tough spot. Now, I'm gonna give you the opportunity to at least let me know where the road commissioner in this town stands, and what my job obligations are or not, okay? Because I can't have five people on a road committee telling me I gotta do this, when I've got taxpayers that wanna get this done, they've got their agendas, too many agendas here. There's too many agendas, too many bosses. And when I opened that door up on H Road, I knew I made a mistake. When you gave me the deadlines, I started them. And my guys have been working for the town of Acton every week since, trying to get those projects, one of those projects done, and moving on to the next. I don't think I was given a fair rap, because, first of all, setting a deadline, I never, until this year, I have never heard of a deadline in the town of Acton.
Anyone else like to speak? Rashad, whoever like to come up? Three minutes.
Do you remember how that you told the people of 13th Street to work together, get along? Let's see you guys pull you apart, too, please.
Joyce Bakshi. I think there's not one person in this room who doesn't believe that the work Dave does to the road, the road commissioner does, is not done very well, and we can all be thankful for that. But I do think the things that I'm hearing and hear, public comment does not have a place. We are hearing the same thing over and over again, and I personally believe it's time to throw it back to you all and David, and public comment should be ceased.
Are you good to come up and finish what you're saying?
I just, I just wanna let people know that I, I feel like as a board, we've been trying to work with the road commissioners to come in and have a discussion and talk about jobs, but it seems when road commissioner for District 2 comes in, it's really hard to talk with him, he's very argumentative and disrespectful, at least to me.
I think we're going somewhere where we don't wanna be going.
Okay. But I'm just, I just wanna say that we have tried to work together.
We have tried.
When we first had a time, a time limit or a deadline that we put on the H Road project, and it wasn't met, and we brought in District 2 to do a project for District 1, I was in favor of it, we did it, I guess I didn't think far enough ahead into it. Looking back, seeing what happened, what's happening now, it's not a, it wasn't a good thing to do. We, I don't know how we would've done it differently, I mean, I would've loved to have seen District 1 take care of that project and move forward. Everybody's busy, I know, but that was, once again, a project that was two, three, four years out. The issue that we have right now is similar, in a way, it's still a number of years that should've been done, but, anyway, let's move on beyond that. My main concern with this whole thing, I'm not, I'm not in favor of doing any more deadlines. I said that the other night, and I'm still sticking by that. So, my biggest concern right now is with the town of Acton, and with the roads in the town of Acton. We know we're, right now, we're October 11th. It wasn't too many years ago, within five, we had some 14 inches of snow on Halloween, the 30th. That's not too far from now. My biggest concern is the roads, and taking care of the roads in Acton. If Dave, or if District 2 goes through and is done, I'm not quite so sure how we're gonna take care of those roads. Yes, we're gonna open it up, what we'll have to do is replace, just replace that road commissioner, it would be for the term of, the remainder of his term, which is until 2021. But you're not gonna do that overnight. It takes, what, three or four dump trucks, plow trucks, sanders, plus loader, smaller trucks, to do one side. Scott's got all he can do to do his side, he's got equipment, he's got everything in place, I don't see, and I have not had that conversation with anybody, I don't see one district taking over for the other. So, you know, we've gotta replace, we've gotta bring somebody in. If anybody watched the weather tonight, up Main, they're talking snow flurries and cold weather by the weekend. So, you know, I, as far as, you know, that, that's my main concern. We right now have, have a road commissioner that can do the job, is more than capable of doing the job. And, I mean, like I just keep saying, that's my big concern. I think there was a lot of things that were said back and forth between this board and District 2, and District 2 back to this board. You know, there is some tension. This isn't gonna be a popular statement, but I think part of the problem, well, no part of the problem, is the road committee. But part of that is our fault. We have, there's no guidelines for the road committee. They haven't been given a real good set of guidelines to go by, to be set up there. So, I'm throwing that one back on us. A few years ago, we, you know, there was a ballot question to abolish the road committee, and it failed, so we moved forward. So, we need to have those guidelines in place, you know, to utilize the road committee in the best way we can. But they also need to work with the road commissioners and make it work, and keep it civil, and keep it moving forward for everybody. Once again, it's not you and me, it's the town, we need to protect the town. This is where it needs to be. You know, as far as, as far as, I'll throw it out, as far as playing Let's Make a Deal, I don't think we can do that. I think, I know myself, I will work as hard as I can with the road commissioners, with a more open thought and support. I've supported both of them, I've hired both of them on private side, so, once again, that's just, that's my opinion on the whole thing. I would like Dave to, I mean, if he would, just flat out rescind his, rescind his resignation, and we can just work hard to move forward. So, that's, that's my statement, I'm sticking by it.
With all due respect, I feel like I've tried to work with the road commissioners and the road committee altogether, and it, to me, in the last year and a half, it hasn't worked out.
Since I've been here, it's been just turmoil between, between all of them and us, and it's very hard to get any, anything accomplished with, with fighting, and it's just-
But, I mean, with that being said, I feel like the agenda item tonight, right now, is the road commissioner's resignation, and I'd like to make a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept the resignation of the road commissioner. Any further discussion? My only discussion with it is, I hope the two of you have a plan for what's gonna happen in the next 30 days. I hate to put it that way to you two, but, I mean, and we'll move on from this, we, all three of us will work together and move on, but, that's my, that's my discussion on it, none of you two have any further discussion on it.
He's been threatening to resign since I've been in office, and I feel like I'm not sure if he, I mean, it's a little frustrating, I don't know what to say, so here it is, and it's on the table.
Okay.
Is that legal?
Is that legal, is that?
Yeah.
What's done on the floor usually has to be taken off on the floor.
It's not being taken off on the floor. Oh, if he wishes- If he wishes to rescind, he could've rescinded.
Understand.
He resigned.
Yeah.
His resignation to be legal has to be written, doesn't it?
No.
No.
It does not have to be written. No, as long as the minutes of the meeting can be, is the appropriate term, be certified by the town clerk, it's a legal resignation, it can be verbal, so.
Would you entertain any further comments?
I can't at this point, 'cause we have a motion on the floor.
The statement.
Yep, and it's up to us to discuss it up here.
Did he actually rescind?
You did not rescind, did you, Dave?
No, I have three minutes, they're gonna cut off, and I have three minutes, they're gonna cut off.
He just asked you to come up to rescind, and you didn't.
Well, no, I didn't actually ask him, I said he could've. We now have a motion on the floor, okay? We have a motion on the floor to accept the resignation of the road commissioner. The only way that can be reversed and have him continue is if, if this board votes a negative on that, and we do not accept the resignation. So, at this time, I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor- All in favor of his resignation? All opposed? Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Goodnight, all.